Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, August 6, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 16, 2018. Floor is open for any questions or comments or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $104,589.65. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated August 6, 2018, in the amount of $104,589.65.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business for the Board of Sanitation this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
If no comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, August 6, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You've been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 16, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have a question on page 22.
No, we're on the minutes.
I'm sorry. I have no -- I have nothing on the minutes. I should have worn my green shirt.
If we had 22 pages of minutes, we're in trouble.
I thought so.
No. I'm sorry, I have no question on those.
All right. If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, we have 45 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,333,690.63. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Now, I got a question. On page 22.
All right.
What's all the general refund miscellaneous?
For the most part, it looks like they were the community center refunds, because they were $250, and that's the deposit amount.
Okay. I just couldn't figure that one out. Other than that, that's all I got.
No further questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated August 6, 2018, in the amount
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Tonight, under new business, we have several items. And the first item is to request to obtain quotes for the Redfern Drive stormwater drainage project. Jeremy?
Yes. Let me just go over the background of it a little bit.
Yes, sir. Please.
Actually, we're -- I was looking back through our notes, and the initial complaint came in 2014. So, since then, we've been looking at this project. And here recently, we put together a cost estimate, and made a couple of site visits, and looked at some areas where we could put up to about six inlets. And I guess I should say, this is for addresses 707 Redfern and 1336 Biloxi. Is that right? Yep. Okay. So, those couple residents there have standing water. And yeah, it's just an ongoing issue that needs to be solved. It's public safety, and standing water in yards and sidewalks and roadway is not good. So then, the proposed dates, we're looking at September 10 would be getting a quote package, and then opening quotes on October. And contractor would do their work. And then substantial completion November, and final December. That's the tentative schedule.
On page three of the handout, it's -- Board, it shows the location of where this is at. They're at the corner of Biloxi and Redfern, on the south side of the street on Redfern. It affects five houses. And I'll go ahead and open the floor up for any questions or comments.
What are they going to do? Put a drain in the backyard?
Jeremy?
Yep. Yeah. So, yeah, I guess, starting south, you know, between Killian and Biloxi, we'd put an under-drain pipe in there with a clean-out, you know, for future maintenance, because there's a low area in that backyard. And it drains from the south to the north in that area. And then there's a low spot behind all three of those houses along Redfern there, primarily in 707 is where most of the water, standing water gathers. So, we would put three inlets back in there, you know, to catch all the water, and then direct it north into the storm sewer system that's there. There is an existing storm sewer system in Redfern, under the road. And then there's also areas of sidewalk that need addressed, also along Redfern.
Okay.
Is that -- excuse me, is the sidewalk, is that part of the project as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the -- some of the sidewalk, we got tore up. And then the water stands on these sidewalks through here. So, it's a -- it would be in the best interest to take them out and redirect them. The -- if you look at the map, the house number 711 and the house number 1336, those two houses, those people have lived there, they're the ones who had the house, their houses built. And they've lived there, what was the one gal saying, 46 years.
Yeah, a long time.
When they built, they had drainage problems. So, the other three homes, those folks have not lived in those homes for very long. So, but they do, they do take on water. Estimated cost, Jeremy?
Estimated cost is $60,000 for the construction cost.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have none.
How long will the project take, about?
I mean, the actual construction, maybe a month, month and a half. So, basically, we're looking at, you know, a timeframe in October, November.
Will there be any street closures, or be able to work around it?
No, there shouldn't be any. I mean, just temporarily, just for unloading equipment, or, you know, materials, stuff like that, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to allow Westler to proceed with the project and get quotes for the -- to fix another drainage problem.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Just stay up there, Jeremy. Board, the next order of business is closeout on Killian Project. Do you want to go through the project itself and what we accomplished?
Sure, yeah. So, it's sort of in that same area there, the cul-de-sac. If you come along Redfern Drive and go south on Killian Drive, the cul-de-sac back in there had drainage issues. And yeah, we came to the board last spring, talked about that. So, say we move forward with that. And Eagle Valley was the contractor. They rewarded that project, and they quickly got to work and got it done in a timely fashion. So, they did.
All right. Thank you so much. Next order of business, board is a disclosure statement concerning Holy Name Parking Lot. This does not need approval. Board, recently Globe Asphalt and Paving Company did some repair work in the parking lot at Holy Name Church. I want to publicly disclose that the City of Beach Grove did not authorize this work to be done, and the City of Beach Grove did not pay to have any of this work done. Globe Asphalt and Paving Company was doing some work for the City of Beach Grove elsewhere in the city, so I wanted to make sure this disclosure was publicly made. So that's just for public information. City did not pay for work to be done on a private parking lot. Thank you. Next order of business is a request to waive mattress fee. We received a letter from the resident at 339 North Seventeenth. Are you here this evening? Come on up. This, your letter was given to all the board members, and I also give a copy of the letter to the police chief, so he can talk to Tom Egan about it, but go ahead.
Yes. My mother, it's actually my mother's residence at Street 39 North Seventeenth Avenue. At the beginning of the year, I moved her out of there and turned the trash restrooms, cans back to the City of Beach Grove, and I've been going over maintaining the property. Unbeknownst to me, July 2nd, when I went over to do, or the July, early July, went over to do my inspection, I found the bill for the mattress and box spring that was not put out by myself or my mother. We have not put any trash or refuge out at that property since at least middle February.
And I think when you come in and talk to the gals up front, you've mentioned that one of the police officers cut your grass.
Yes. Tom Egan has been, I cannot praise that gentleman enough. I believe I know his mother. I went to school. She taught me in English class, but he's been mowing her yard and helping her out for, I know better than a decade. And I- I highly commend and praise him as a law enforcement gentleman.
Well, what we did was, I just want you to know that I give a copy of this letter to the police chief and ask him to follow up with Tom for verification. Chief, do you have any comment on it?
No. Tom believes that they would not have set anything out and verified the letter.
Just to, just to, I guess, make it clear, I do not live at that property. I represent my mother. She's 79 years old, and I know for a fact that she did not put that out back to the residence.
So your, your, your request is to have the fee removed?
If, if I may please, yes.
Okay. Have you paid it?
No, sir. The, there would be no bill coming, since all the utilities and everything have been turned off to the property.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for the loan institution to take possession of the property. The only thing that we have on the property as of right now is the homeowner's insurance, which our attorney told us that we had to keep until they take possession of the property.
Okay. All right. I'll open it up. Board members, any thoughts?
I have no questions.
I have none.
If not, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make said motion.
To-
Waive the fee.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you, counsel, very much.
Next order of business is a road closure for the Moose Lodge, and I asked a clerk to read it into the record.
I contacted you about a car show at the Beach Grove Moose, 3320 South Emerson Avenue, on September the 8th. We would like to request that Belle Fontaine be blocked from Second Street to Emerson Avenue. Also, the alley between Emerson and Second, from our northern property line to the Stafford Liquors at 3418 Emerson. Registration begins at 10:00 a.m., and the show would end at 6:00 p.m. If barricades could be up from 8:00 a.m. to about 8:00 p.m., it would facilitate the awards program at 6:30. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I'm okay with it unless police or DPW has any concerns.
When he, when he-
... Grove's hands, it's at the Marion County Treasurer's office.
Right, yeah, it's been transferred there, yes.
That adds a little bit of red tape to the whole issue, because if you came downstairs tomorrow to pay it in full-
Yeah, I already-
-you'd not accept the payment.
Right, I found that out.
So that adds another layer of problems, so.
Let us take a look at, I'll talk to the Public Works Director and-
Yeah, they know me pretty well. I've been down there.
All right. Any other issues?
No. I was born and raised here, and I love the city.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes new business. Board, any comments?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:35 p.m. We will convene the city council meeting this evening at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. No, really?
Oh, my God.
Good evening, and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, August the 6th, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy, Templeton Councilman at Large.
Jim Barrett, Council at Large.
Dave Harrison, District 5 Councilman.
Dan McMellon, Clerk of Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Bita Mascari, Council District 2.
Elizabeth Mas-, oh, Elizabeth Lamping, Council District 1.
Something you want to talk about?
Kevin Day, District 4. Thank you. Chris, Councilor Duffer has an excused absence this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special presentations this evening. We'll go into committee reports, the ABC.
Good evening. We had one new permit approved this morning. It's El Moral, or Moral Mexican Restaurant LLC. They're located at 2519 Albany Street, Beach Grove, 46107. There was no issues. They were, they had all their documentation turned in and everything, so that's it. Any questions?
That's on Emerson?
No, on Albany.
Oh, on Alb-
It's a new Mexican restaurant.
Oh.
On Albany.
Is it over there by the Family Dollar?
I believe so.
Okay.
Oh. So, there's three gentlemen. They're family, they're all family. One, I think there's two brothers, and then I can't remember the other relation, but it'll be a family-owned restaurant, which is nice, so they're pretty excited to get going. So, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
The Greenscape Commission did not submit a report, financial report, Dan.
I want to apologize. I do have a typo on the front page. That's supposed to be a dollar sign where I changed that. Good evening, councilors. In July, we made the following payments. 2012 bond payment, $115,213. Balances approximately $1 million. 2016 refinanced 2005 and 2007 RDC bond payment, $250,820. Balance, $1,960,000. The Stormwater Fund, as of 7/31/18, had a balance of $328,757.92. Also, we received notice from MAME that going into our third year in this contract, they are estimating an increase to our insurance of 13 to 14 and a half percent. I never wanted to sign a contract with them, and I would like to investigate other options. Again, a reminder that we did not get a tax anticipation warrant for the second part of this year, and we have lived within our budget. That is good news and helps provide a bright financial picture for the City of Beach Grove, which ultimately affects our citizens and the employees. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmellon@beachgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. Our city corporation bank account, as of the last day of the month, was $3,856,905.48. Our utility had $1,284,011.1. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you, Dan McMellon.
Questions or comments for the clerk?
I just want to say thanks for including, you know, some of the other things that are on this list as well.
So, just a question, the insurance increases, do you think that's kind of in step with what insurance increases across from other, I mean, I mean, insurance goes up every year. Is that kind of in step?
I think it's, no, I think it's definitely high. I don't recall us in previous years paying an increase like that. I spoke to the mayor about it. Hopefully, it's just one of them things where it's a scare tactic, and they come back at 7% or 8% increase and hope we're happy with it. I think 7% or 8% is probably, you know, maybe industry standards. I don't know for sure, but I think, I think that's extremely high, and it's something we'll have to pass off to the employees, which, you know, we went a number of years without any increase whatsoever.
The, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think two years ago, our increase was 27%. Health insurance.
I don't recall that.
Yeah, could have been, could have went up to 40%.
It could have went up to that, but it didn't.
So it could be negotiated, then? It's, there's, there's some negotiating room?
I don't think there's any negotiating. They're just going to tell you this is how much it's going to cost you. But that's the reason why I think, you know, it doesn't hurt to put it out to bid.
Well, you have a year and a half left. This is a three-year deal.
But there's ways of getting out of the contract with IAC. I've already checked on that, so I'm just, like I say, I'm not happy with it, and I'm sure the employees are not going to be.
So this is for the high deductible as well? And this is, okay, I'll look.
$6,000, or maybe $5,500. It was $6,000, I think it went down to $5,500 per fan.
Any other questions? We'll move on. Public safety, you should have a, their report in your packet. Same way with compliance. No report this month from the Redevelopment Commission, so we'll move on to reading of the minutes. You have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first one is the regular scheduled meeting on Monday, July the 2nd, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I'll make the correction. Elizabeth Mascari. Should be Elizabeth Lamping.
All right, apologize for that.
That's okay. I meant Betty. I was going to tell that young man out here. He got in trouble. Aunt Betty, Aunt Betty will make sure your dad's okay with you, okay?
I have a question. Were you ever a Mascari?
You what?
Were you ever a Mascari?
No, no, no.
Just checking.
No.
I will get that corrected. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or corrections on the minutes dated Monday, July 2nd? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve with the correction.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody opposed?
I was standing here and voting just because it wasn't there.
The next set of minutes, council, is for a special meeting called on Monday, July 16th, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion. I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. This evening, we have two items under unfinished business. This, the first item is second reading on General Ordinance Number 11, 2018. This is an ordinance that deletes the chapter on false alarms in the City of Beach Grove. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules and read this ordinance by title only.
Make a motion to go title only.
I second.
We'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 11, 2018, is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to, oh, I'll ask for a motion, I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record. I'm sorry, Dan.
General Ordinance Number 11, 2018, is an ordinance that deletes Chapter 104 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning false alarms.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 11, 2018, is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion. I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. General Ordinance Number 12, 2018, is up for approval on second reading only, and I had talked to a couple of councilors that either had questions about it, or maybe wanted to table this ordinance for further review, so I'll divert back to the council.
Liz, did you, I know that me and you've talked, did you want to go first?
Well, I just know that we had opportunity to meet with a couple of department heads and after review and consideration, and then pulling some ordinance from some outside municipalities. I think it might be, I personally will vote against it, but I think I would like to motion to table it for now for further review and research.
And if she does make that motion to table, I'll second it. This ordinance, if it is tabled, really isn't going to change anything, but what it does do for the moment is give the administration and department heads a chance to at least think about. It involves using credit cards and so forth, and, and the word sounds terrible when you say the word credit card, but what it does is this, by tabling this, as I said, it won't do anything necessarily, other than it doesn't put the final hands down on it. It gives an opportunity maybe for it to, to listen to whether or not credit cards or some type of credit could be used. I, I probably don't need to go on and on, but I did want to say one thing. Just to give an example, nowadays, I know our departments try to stay with-
It was a total nightmare the first year in. We wasn't getting receipts, and I can tell you right now, these credit card companies, don't care what excuse you are or how big you are, you're getting a late fee added on there. Under state statute, we're not allowed to pay for late fees, sales tax, things like that, so I would question whether or not by state statute that we could, you know, do any of this stuff, and so, it, it's hard getting receipts back from individuals, whatever they went out and charged. It always seemed like we was missing receipts, and then we'd get a late fee, and you'd have to call them, you'd spend an hour on the phone, if not days, but it, it's a total nightmare, and I'm totally opposed to any of it.
And I think, and we've talked about this in the past, about, I remember when, when we first started back in 2012, we had bills and receipts that, for reimbursement, had no clue, involved alcohol, involved other things. Wait a minute, you know, what is, you know, what is going on here? You know, so I don't, you know?
I think part of it is the weakness of the ordinance that we have, so, and that's why I think Councilman Temple and I, Temple, we think that we could revisit it. I know you had inserted a town of I or credit card usage policy, and I've got one from, from Carmel, and then there's also one from the city of Portage, which I'll make sure that everybody in the council gets a copy, and I think that we just need to make a better ordinance, because there are ordinances that really do hold people accountable in very strict terms that, 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 and I think the ordinance we have is pretty weak.
When we first, when this was first written, counselor, you came to me with your concern about the city joining the NRA, and, and you were totally opposed to that, and now you want to table the ordinance.
Well, and, and I've also had some clarity on that as well, because there are some of the organizations, and, and there are some organizations that if you don't belong to the organization, you don't get the benefits of a group discount, so I, I just think that it's okay to reflect it, it's okay to, to look into something, and it's okay to have an op, a different, to, not just to, it's okay to look at something in more depth.
I don't think it's okay to have an ordinance that's been on the books since 82 that is not being enforced, and I'm not going to enforce it.
Right, that's, okay.
We've, we've kind of made that clear to, and first of all, we visited department heads, they didn't come to us, and, but there's no question that whether or not credit cards are used is going to be enforced by the administration, they're well aware of that. They're not even, never encouraged us to go that route at the moment, just, we felt it best that this be tabled, and we, but I was just going to say, I agree with Councilor Lamping, that I, I don't know about the alcohol stuff, by gosh, people turning in private receipts could get away with, I would think, just as much, and I don't think that a person who works for our city should be obligated for major money in their own personal lives. I, I don't think they should. They're going to continue to do that, I can't change that, department heads know that, I just think it's wrong, and if someone's not, if a department head cannot get a receipt in in a timely manner, the ordinance should address that. It's not the only thing that the department head has to get in timely and be responsible, that's just one of many things that a chief or a deputy chief is responsible for, and I could probably pick out many things that we do that they still have a timeline or an obligation to be clear and precise and honest about what they do. But I don't know personally, and I, and I share that, I work for the city, and I know I went out of town, and I had to put up for my own hotel room for two days for a school that the city required me to go to, and I felt at the time, then, you know, I look back on it, that at that time, and this wasn't under this administration, of course, but I just felt that there, there was a better way to do it, and the stories that we have heard from other people, it kind of encouraged us that, I hope in the future, there's a better way than they have to put out their own money on something they're required to do by this city. I don't think it's fair, and this isn't going to change it. What we're doing here today is dog and pony show, but it is a step by, by st- Be shouting out in favor of the, those in those departments that are subject to have to go to schools or buy other supplies, that we don't feel like you should have to pull it out of your own wallet, and
It's been like that since the, when I hired on in 1980.
Well, Mayor, it's just an area, I'm sorry, Vito, just quickly, that, you know, I agree with a lot of things, but I'm, I'm going to disagree with you and, you and Dan, but you guys are going to be the ones that are going to fulfill this anyway, so no matter what we do, that practice will continue. Go ahead, Vito, I'm sorry.
There's been a lot of, I mean, talking 82, I mean, there's been a lot of advances in expense reporting since 1982. I mean, for instance, I have an app on my phone through my company, I have Amex, okay, that I have an app called Concur, that every time I purchase something, I take a picture of the receipt, and automatically goes to our, our payroll department to analyze it. Now, I've had receipts where it's been stuff for printing jobs or whatever it may be, but then there's like six or, you know, a snack or something, they'll, they'll pull that money out. I think that if you're looking at it, that you can't stop fraud, or it's too much work with the bookkeeping. You're never going to create a law from criminals doing criminal activity, it's just not, I mean, you're not going to create an ordinance for people trying to sneak in, you know, a pack of cigarettes on their expense report, but if you're doing it because you're just throwing your hands up in the air and saying this is how it's been since 1982, that's kind of, to me, seems ridiculous.
My comment on that would be, they have Speedway gas cards, they've got accounts at Lowe's, they've got them at Sam's Club, they got them at Walmart, it's not-
That's just why we need to discuss it further, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that if you look at how essentially Beech Grove, the city, is a business, and you're the accountant for the business, there are a lot of other businesses across the country that allow their employees to have credit cards, and they manage it, and I think as a city, we can do that.
I just think for transparency purposes, if, if, if we're, if, if these are all chargeable, allowed, and acceptable charges, that you're getting the receipts back, it just makes more sense that there's a direct line between, between the payment source, right to the treasurer. I don't quite, I don't understand the, the acceptance of, of lack of transparency, accountability of all these separate receipts coming from different persons and different credit cards in different areas. There are good ordinances that really hold that person accountable, I mean, even to the point where it could jeopardize their job if they don't follow the ordinance management of, of the credit card.
I think it's also going to be something that's going to relay to an employee handbook for, whether it be the police department, the fire department, the parks department. I mean, if, if I were a firefighter, and I had to make the grocery run, and say that was a week that my family had to pay all their bills, and I don't use credit, and now I have to go pay $400 to go buy groceries for a firehouse, and it's on me, I'd be pretty upset.
It's not on them. We pay them meal allowance.
You pay them back, right?
No, we pay for a meal allowance that's given to them on their paycheck.
My question is, what, what major purchases do they make? I mean, everything I thought was approved in the-
This is mainly when they travel, Dan.
Mainly when they travel?
There are, there are purchases that are made for the department, these things are within their budget. The deputy chief, when asked, he, he has put out money for things that they need that they would have to buy. These aren't above the budget items or above those things in their budget categories, they're things to fulfill it, and they might have to use Amazon to, to purchase it, and to do so, they're going to have to use their own credit for that.
If this is really in regards to travel, and we require these departments to travel, whether it be to get accreditation or training, why isn't the city paying for their stay and lodging and meals? I mean, every other company in the United States does that.
Some, Vito, some travel, and some classes are mandatory for, to maintain employment, some are not.
But what if it's for the betterment of the department? I mean, I'm sure they're, they were trained, whether it was in Jim's time or your time, that you went to because you thought it was going to make you a better public safety person. Now, may, I mean, like FDIC, I mean, is FDIC required?
Nope.
But, I'm just saying, I mean, they're, they're all both facing recruiting challenges right now, that if you can say, you know, I don't know, I mean, anytime I travel, I turn in my receipts, they pay for everything. And I got a per diem, per day for food, if I don't want to eat breakfast and lunch, then I'm going to have a nice dinner.
When I was on the fire department, every time I traveled, I held my receipts, and when I returned, I was reimbursed.
I did too, and I, I didn't like it, but that's the difference.
And as far as the membership part of it goes, I mean, it would be nice if we had an ordinance that said the membership as determined by the department head's need for their department, so, you know, it would, you know, we could put that kind of language in there, that, that the membership would be determined by the department head need for outside educations and, and necessary trainings and stuff.
And I, I agree with that.
That's very easy to do, you, alls they do is turn in a, a thing, put on the docket, and a check is issued to them. It's, it's not a big deal. I think this is being blown way out of proportion, and a lot of it don't even, you know, don't even apply to what's going on. There was numerous abuses, Dennis talked about it with the alcohol, we had a trip that they went on, that someone was a waitress that used to live in Beech Grove, so the bill was $13, and they gave them a $25 tip. That doesn't even follow state statute.
I think the ordinances, I think there's, the ordinances do prohibit that, that's what a good ordinance does, it, it eliminates that.
Well, the best part of it is, is someone got caught, so apparently, whatever happened, the procedure in effect got them to be able to be caught. It wasn't like someone tapped on someone's shoulder with the city and says, guess what, 20 years ago, I got away with this. Apparently, they didn't. Why? Because accountability and having it right in front of us, and I don't know, but in some of the things that you're reading, people could lose their jobs or be suspended if they're going to do those things, not just those, anything that they violate, that they've had trust put upon them, you know, and I, I do think this whole thing we're doing is, it does go a little overboard in the sense that we're, we're just asking to table it is all we're doing right now anyway, so.
And it's from what I understand, for a membership, if you have, if you're a member to some particular organization, you do get, you get better rates, and if you're going to use these, if you're going to be part of a membership, when it comes time to go to classes or use the services that they offer, you do get a considerable rate discount for being a member.
Most any hotels give government rates.
No, no, I mean, as far as the program, as far as the programs are offered.
Talking about the class itself could be half the cost, a member of IAC, a member of APO.
Through IAC, they get discounts, we're a member of IAC, so.
Right, she's, she's, but she's saying that these, these are good things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when I was on the department, a lot of the classes that individual firefighters, and I know some police officers go through, they're elected, some that, that they want to go to to better themselves, they're not forced to go to by the department head, and I went to National Fire Academy, and I did that on my own, and I, I did get reimbursed for my gas and my lodging, but the class was on me, and that's, I wanted to do that, to better myself, to get my certification for the fire department. I know it's the same way with some of the other firefighters and police officers. The things that are, the city has always paid for reimbursement for lodging and for mileage. The meals, you know, I'm not going to turn in a $20 bill when I ate at McDonald's, you know, you know, I just can't, the meals was on me, that was my choice to go there.
My question is, this is only second reading, why are you wanting to table it? Are you wanting to come up with a different ordinance, or?
Possibility, or maybe, maybe go away period, or maybe some changes, but I do know that in the police and fire, that they wouldn't be upset if we tabled this, and I know I wouldn't-
Last meeting, I kinda liked that, cause I felt like it.
Rental unit?
I just think may, let me look at the definitions here. Yeah, I would just say rental unit, cause we have a definition at the beginning, rental unit or rental housing unit. Think we need to stick with the definitions.
Okay, or one hundred and fifty dollars per individual apartment, sleeping room, or rental unit?
I would just say per rental unit or rental housing unit, and leave it at that.
Or rental housing unit. Get rid of the sleeping room and apartment, or keep that in there?
I would get rid of apartment.
Cause we defined apartment, and when it regards to this ordinance is, what was it? One or two or more buildings without a maintenance person on staff, correct? I'm just trying to look through.
Well, it was brought up in special meeting about the house on Sixth Street where he changed a double.
Five units.
Six houses.
Six.
So he was getting rent for all six places, and he was not getting, you know. So he had six apartments in that, that building with only two ways to get out.
But that, that's another thing, Jim, how would we know he had six, you know what I mean? I mean, unless we do an inspection to say how many people are living here, which I don't know.
Well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, with this ordinance, that when somebody does apply for this license, not only does the city attorney and administration know, but our compliance officer would know also.
Could know.
Could know. Something that we would have to let him know that there is somebody applying for apartment rental, and if he's got a house, it's, could be just two residents and he's making it six, then we have to know about that. Not only for licensing, that's, that's, but for safety. We found that out on Sixth Street.
Craig, if you had a chance to read through this initial one, I mean. Just, do you, I mean. Are we walking a fine line here with any type of like fair housing?
I thought about that before the meeting, I don't think so, I mean, who's it just really impacting?
It's only.
It's not a race.
It's, it's only going to impact the homeowner versus the tenant. I mean, could that increased fee translate into an increased rental cost?
They, they could.
But that's, I mean, every company.
And they could factor into what their rent is, but, I mean, essentially the landlord or the owner is being assessed the, assessed the charge for the registration, so.
Okay, uh, one year, B is one year. Subsection one, one fifty instead of seventy-five, per rental unit or rental housing unit. Is that accurate?
And that's, they're gonna have to pay that every year, unless.
Well, wait a minute, we'll get into that.
Sorry.
If you go down to C, landlord license renewal. One, no fee shall be charged for renewal of a landlord license of any rental property if the property owner shows proof that he or she has attended the Safe Rental Training Program conducted by the prosecutor's office within two years from the time of renewal, and there are no pending orders on the property being relicensed.
I'd like to see that change to six months.
Instead of two years?
Yeah.
Well, I think we talked about, that's, I mean, these classes, Mark knows about these classes.
How often are the classes?
I believe you have five years unless it's a different demand.
Come out to prosecutor's office, they do them quarterly, don't they?
Quarterly.
Yep.
Keep in mind, counsel, um, we, we license them to begin with, but you wanna work with the rental property owner, and you want to say, look, if this guy's, or this person is a good rental owner, why are, you know, let's work with this guy, if he has, he keeps the property up, has good tenants, you know, and he attends this program, why, why can't we work with him?
Why not? I would agree with that, and just, there's a lot of people that we still charge stuff to them all the time, you know, they're good citizens, keep their property up. I mean, do you know what I mean?
Well, I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, we wanna use that, that class, going to that class as something that would, would, would get them, and want them to be better landlords. I mean, if you're gonna create a situation where it becomes such a burden, I mean, it could reverse itself. I mean, I think there should be, maybe every six months to go to a landlord class?
Well, but why would you give them a license that's valid for a year, and then say they got two years to do the class?
You're right, the timing doesn't line up. I mean, I think I said last time that we still make them out of class, but we don't reduce the fee. I mean, you need to do the class, but that was just, I don't, not sure what everyone else's opinion was on that.
So you would, uh, the council would, uh, be interested in charging a, a fee every year that it's up for renewal? Is that what I'm hearing, Vito?
That, that's my opinion on it, yes, I don't know if that's what the rest of the council believes.
Hundred and fifty dollars per year.
We're charging.
This is only the first reading too, I know we wanna get into where we think it needs to be for the introduction, but I have a feeling that this is gonna be a somewhat contested ordinance as we start reading through it the second and third time. Back to maybe the chickens, people coming in here debating this.
That's in section one fifty-eight. Uh, and two, underneath that, any property up for license renewal that has pending orders or has been declared either a public or environmental nuisance shall be charged two hundred dollars for renewal. Parentheses, the Board of Public Works and Safety has the authority to revoke the license. So do you, if you have, if you have a problem property, do you want them to pay more, do you want them to be revoked?
I think the problem property is gonna be fined, I think then we say every business day until the issue's fixed.
Well, that's if, if they're not licensed, but this is, um, this is if, uh, they're, they're already being ticketed for a nuisance. So, it comes up for renewal, uh, the city has the right to, uh, take corrective action.
Okay, now, when it's, they get a ticket for a nuisance, it's not the first time that they get, they have problems, it's a repeat offenders. And if they take care of it after the first notification, you know, they've done their job, they've done what they want them to do. Just like the compliance officer, he goes out to write somebody for high grass, and he goes back the next few days and it's all cut, they've done what they want him to do.
But once, you're exactly right, but once the ticket is issued, it's too late for the compliance. It goes into the court system. Is that, counsel, is that right?
The first one's a warning shot, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then the second one is, so, I don't know if you consider the warning shot as a ticket?
No, we would have to follow the nuisance ordinance, the nuisance rule. You have to give them time to comply.
Yeah, the goal's compliance, not to make money.
I would agree with it then, I mean, cause like the nuisance law, if I remember right, it's six tickets, something like that. It, it's not just a warning and a ticket, you're a nuisance. That's be several issues that have been identified that you're not complying, in compliance with. So if you're just gonna be a, uh, nonexistent landlord. We're up there right. Does it say six tickets? No, we're getting off.
Yeah, I agree with that, leaving it the way it is on two.
Okay. And on page seven. At the top, subsection I, the last sentence, the Department of Compliance cannot consider tenants or possible tenants as a reason for denial of a license. Is that accurate, counsel?
Yeah.
Yes.
That would be your fair housing act there.
It's not the city's or the compliance, uh, goal to decide who gets rent and who doesn't. So, I would say that that language would have to be in there.
Yeah.
And then the final thing would be, uh, one, if this ordinance is passed, it would be, come into, uh, it would be effective six months after the legal notice is put in the paper. And it either has to be advertised in the, in an Apple Star, or the Court and Commercial Report. There has to be a legal notice to property owners.
Dennis, I do have one question.
Sure.
On page three, number six, the rent-to-own properties are not exempt from this ordinance? Uh, I guess my question is, and I've asked Craig on this, that's an actual contract between two people, how could you monitor this?
It's, it's a problem, but explain to me what a rent-to-own is, I'm not sure, I know it is with a TV or, or a appliance, but how, I'm not sure.
It, it's almost like buying it on contract, is what you're doing. Uh, you're renting from them right now, and they'll say, well, if you give me five thousand dollars down and continue with this monthly payment at the end of a certain time, you will own it.
So is that a bully payment then?
Well, there could be, I mean, it's just how the contract, I mean, that's just an example, but I don't know how we could monitor any contract between two people. If you and I made a contract, it's.
Maybe that's, it's to keep, for some maybe, you guys as a defense, you know, they say, well, we're rent-to-own, we're not, and then we say, no, it's in our order.
I'm not sure how rent-to-own would, I mean, the person still owns the property until it's finalized, I don't know.
Well, so does a bank though, if they've got the mortgage on your property, they're the actual owners of it, so.
But that, but that is a set of mortgage versus a rent-to-own, I would.
Well, it's still a legal contract. I mean, if you went to court over it because they wasn't making their payments, I mean, it would have to go in front of a judge, and he may, uh, throw them out of the place. I, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to find out how we would.
I was just trying to say, I don't know if rent-to-own even should apply, because I still say, a mortgage is a, is a separate, it is a, it is a compliance within state law, the things you have to do in order to have the mortgage, which gives the person really the right to say they own the property based upon repossession or non-payment, but a contract is still making, saying they gotta pay the rent.
We can go back to the definition of owner.
That's still definite, yeah, I don't know.
And it says, it's the purchaser who's in a contract with the owner, or the trust, the bank, or if it's, you know, held by the state of Indiana, et cetera, but it doesn't say anything about a contract between the purchaser, or owes the bank, and the rent-to-own. What would you say? I think we might have our out right there, so. I agree with you though, that could be what they, anybody comes up and say, well, I'm rent-to-own it, and then we have to go.
Well, if you have a minority that wants to do this, then you've got the fair housing thing, well, they're not renting to me because of my religious beliefs, my color, whatever. So, I mean, I'm just trying to keep us out of trouble, that's.
I just think rent-to-own, that person's still a renter, but.
Exactly.
Well, and we don't wanna make it, I mean, if somebody's renting to own property, and they've already put a significant amount of their resources into owning a property, I mean, you don't wanna create a situation where they're gonna have a lot of lost money. I mean, it could be, I mean, they could, I, I don't know, that needs, I need, I need more legal explanation for that. I, that needs to be more clearly explained to me for fair housing and, and, and legal reasons.
Do we have any real estate professionals in the crowd?
Yes, our real estate, yeah.
We have a, we have a fair housing, sorry, on our ordinance, we updated it in the past few years, so we can fight with that. I can see a situation where like landlords could, and maybe have a creative attorney who'll say, well, you know, we're, 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 we're in a contract and not renting, and then, then we're stuck with what they tell us.
They could do that verbally, I don't believe it would be against the law to say, here, I'm rent-to-own to my son verbally, because it's not a, again, I, I don't think there's anybody saying it has to be, it's an agreement between the two of them, whether it's verbally or contract, am I right, or?
He says it's gotta be a right.
Land contract must be a right.
I was gonna say, there has to be some kind of legal guidelines to have a, I mean, a rent-to-own, right? I mean, you don't just sign over the mortgage, the deed, I, I would think there has to be some kind of mortgage.
It's a new concept to me, I'm not sure with any.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody know?
Yeah, I've done a rent-to-own before, so it's, it's just like a lease, but it's a little different. You're supposed to be setting so much aside, like maybe two hundred dollars a month, it goes into a special savings account, and then if they do exercise the right to buy the house, they have that money in that savings account that they can pull up, pull from, for the down payment.
For down payment, like an escrow?
Right.
Okay.
And, but they don't have to, at the end of their lease or whatever, they just wanna leave, then the, the landlord gets that money back, I mean, it's a scam half the time. Yeah.
But would there be some type of, if they were to come in and defend getting out of paying this ordinance, or us enforcing the ordinance, would there be some type of paper trail?
Pretty strong.
That they could prove to say, this is what I'm, if, that's all I'm looking for, I mean, if they can prove that they're in a rent-to-own or not in a rent-to-own, then.
Yeah, it's, it's a contract, you have a piece of paper that shows how much is being set aside, and if they want to buy the home, they have first rights to it, and they.
Okay.
Yeah.
Take that money out of their savings and, and buy it.
They're actually still renting it, they're actually still renting it, even though rent's on.
And it doesn't change the payment amount, it's just how the payment amount is?
Yeah, essentially for the landlord, the renter will keep the home in a better situation.
Okay.
And will keep up on the repairs more, that's what the.
Because there's some incentive, okay.
Eighty percent of the time, they don't follow the approval.
So the presumption should be it's not until they prove, so they show us the contract, right?
Eighty percent of the time, they do not purchase the home?
Right.
Kinda like J.D. Byrter and stuff, except it's a home.
Well, I'm just saying if.
But the landlord has to put it into a separate account, you know, the whole savings account, and keep it separate.
I would just believe it the way it is.
So it's not, it's not affecting, okay, there's no challenges legally with the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not until they actually make the deal with the bank, you know, that they're buying it, right?
Right, once they exercise their right to buy the home, then it goes over to the mortgage yet.
It wouldn't create a situation where an innocent person is gonna have a lot of lost revenue in, in a, in a, in a, somewhere, it's, okay, so I, I understand.
Any other corrections? Comments or questions? If you approve it tonight on first reading, we will hear this again at the September, regularly scheduled September council meeting on second reading.
And not to make things more difficult, but you're all gonna, everybody's gonna get, uh, an, uh, an ordinance from Bloomington in their in-basket if they wanna look that over, to see if there's some referencing that you can go by to help with this.
I know it's first reading, but we pretty much just went through it, we do it by title only?
Motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll second the motion.
Need a motion?
I'll make said motion.
Jim?
I'll second.
Vote on my, beginning on my left, buddy?
Title only.
Title only.
Let's see. Three, two pages, isn't it, I promise?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time I'll ask the clerk to read general ordinance number thirteen, two thousand and eighteen into the record, first reading by title only.
General ordinance number thirteen, twenty eighteen is an ordinance that replaces chapter one fifty-five, the Code of Ordinances concerning residential housing properties in the city of Beach Grove.
Thank you, Dan. There's a, uh, he's read it into the record, I'll ask for a motion to approve general ordinance thirteen, two thousand and eighteen on first reading only.
Make the motion approved, general ordinance number thirteen, first reading.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will, um, hear it on second reading at the September fourth council meeting. That concludes new business, council comments, beginning on my left, buddy?
Thank everybody for being here. I kinda wanted, I was looking here at the compliance report by, uh, that was given to us, I think by Mark Rim, and what, what the good news about this is, when you see that, um, there is compliant issues or inspections at sixty, and, um, eleven letters were sent out, and this is for, this is in July, but zero tickets, it indicates that the compliance for the city's goal is, is not, at first anyway, in anybody's pocketbook, it's just to resolve the problem. And this is constantly what we see month after month in compliance, so I just wanted to say, um, good job on that, because, and trying to be, you know, fair with everyone and so forth, so I just, uh, wanted to comment. I also wanna, uh, thank the, uh, the mayor and the clerk for, uh, uh, just a, a lot of good communications lately, especially the mayor and the last meeting we had on this, how important that was for us to have that special meeting, I think it was very helpful. That's all I have.
And I'd like to thank everybody for coming today, and, and we oughta, the Music on Main Street Saturday was fantastic, so. If anybody showed up, we'll agree a hundred percent.
Did you say?
You know what I'd like to say, is the mayor and the clerk agree on an ordinance for once, and we voted down.
Well, I knew something wasn't right, right there.
Yeah, no, no, no.
We both.
Finally get them intact, no, we voted down.
We both wore green tonight, we knew where.
It should've worked.
You wanna try to go for it's day or night out, see what happens?
That's all I got.
Uh, thanks for everybody for coming out, and, uh, also, my son's back there. Ryan, stand up, stand up for me.
Is that your son?
Yeah. So he came in tonight, um, you know, he's, uh, just starting seventh grade at middle school. Uh, he's actually got Craig's wife as one of his teachers, but, Bud, thanks for coming, I hope your notes are good, and you can have your electronics back to get home.
What's his name?
Ryan.
Ryan, Aunt Betty says, you can come to my house, cause it's right out the back door from the middle school, and if you ever need a place to hang out, if you wanna get away from your dad, come see me.
Since you two got the same last name, too.
But, uh, I just wanna say, I really wanna send out a congratulations to our, our city, our chamber and, and Music on Main, it was a really great event, it was a lot of hard work, uh, I'm hoping the public support was strong, it seemed to be strong, and I know Mayor Buckley and several of us who were there all day working at, uh, these events just make us better as a city, so it was a fun day.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming.
In your packet, counsel, you should have a new, a clean copy of general ordinance eight and ten.
Yes.
So that is for you.
Yep.
Um, I cut an article out of the Star about the sinkhole downtown. Uh, we just had our fourth, in Beach Grove, we just had our fourth sinkhole this year. It's down at twenty, this one's at Twenty-Fifth and Main, so, uh, they're popping up every once in a while. But anyway, I just wanted to make that aware, you're aware of that. The, uh, received a letter from, uh, Senator Donnelly concerning Amtrak, I wanted to share with you. Uh, we've been working with, uh, Mr. Anderson, who's the new CEO of Amtrak, about, uh, what we could do to save jobs and, and, uh, not cut services at that facility. You received an email concerning, uh, the, one of the fire engines, it's, it's being fixed, it should be done in the next couple of days. ADM, their annual environmental permit, you've got, received a copy of it, just for your records. A while back, you folks approved, uh, a income survey, and, uh, that was done. Uh, we, I, there should be an email in your packet, uh, concerning that. Uh, that was a good decision to do. Uh, that income survey is good for six years and can be shared. Uh, it will be certified, uh, we met the, uh, we met the percentage to become eligible for more funding. So that, uh, once the certification comes in, then it'll be on file in the clerk's office. Okra has, um, tentatively approved the plan for Main Street, so I suspect soon you'll, uh, there'll be a presentation given to you by Shrewsbury and Associates. There are some comments that Okra made on the email that I attached to that concerning Mike Klein Peter. So, um, the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is, uh, I'm gonna have a special council meeting on August the twentieth, here at seven P.M., uh, we have to go through a couple of things, one of them is very important. It is the multi-hazard mitigation plan that the City County Council approved a couple of weeks ago. It has to be approved by each governing body in Marion County. And this is, uh, in the, this is a FEMA document, Homeland Security Resolution that we have to pass, and, uh, it opens us up for more funding in the event of a disaster. So, um, in your packet tonight, you should have that copy of that document. So please bring that with you at the next meeting. Some folks from the city of Indianapolis, uh, who work in, uh, in sustainability, will, uh, go through this plan with you. this plan with you. Um, so, uh, I've met with them a couple of times, and, uh, I look forward again to their presentation, and, uh, this is good for the city and it's good for Marion County. So, uh, we will meet on, uh, August twentieth in these chambers at seven. And maybe, uh, we'll get a presentation concerning the Okra grant as well. Not sure That's it. Appreciate your work.
National Night Out.
Tomorrow, five thirty to seven thirty at Channel...